Sancho, you're on. That's why I don't do it. I don't know how to do it.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I surrender the promise of the NJ SA 1040-10 of the Open Public Meeting Act. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Elizabeth has been given. By mailing a January 2012 schedule for your newspapers circulating within the County Union and designated to receive such notice, and by posting the 2012 meeting schedule on the Housing Authority Office Boarding Board, and further by filing the 2012 meeting schedule on annual meeting date of January 30, 2013, Office of City Board. How do we do it?
Hello, Paul?
Ms. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Capitao? Yeah, I don't think, enough's enough, I don't think, I think they made a move, but he doesn't show. He's out right now. Ms. Morales Best Friends? Ms. Penzoil?
Here.
Ms. Shann?
Here.
Chair of Poll. Do you want me to give you that one?
Hello?
What are we doing, everybody's getting shot.
That was the section. I adopted for the minutes November 19. I'm making a little.
One second.
All in favor? Close.
We met a couple minutes ago. We've seen the fix.
Second. All in favor? Close. There's one in the package. And that is the Housing Authority Emergency Action Plan. It has, you know, basically what we do, and who we work with, and who we contact. I was talking, it actually started in 2001, and there's some updates that is moving along. But just so you have the complete press package, this is it. It just, uh, come here. So this is the communication, maybe it's not.
Um, you can do it now, yes, we didn't put it in.
Yeah, this is, this is an update of the operating reserve also, based, I got this on Friday, so it tells you where they're at, uh, from a legal standpoint. You know, we'll keep you posted, but it's moving along, they, they, it does indicate that they, there are 350 housing authorities represented, which is quite a, you know, quite a large number. So, um... You know, we'll see what happens here, you know, it, it's, this, this housing authority goes a substantial amount of money, I guess it was in the range of, uh, I don't know, a couple million, I hope it was at least two million dollars. So we're gonna pass it down to, uh, see. That's a big deal.
Bill?
This?
Could everybody look at the meeting dates? Are you okay with them? Can we pick for October, October the 7th, and for November, November 4th? Okay, stand up here with everybody?
Saturday and 4th, is alright with me?
Alright, yeah. Still for hats for me to thank.
Can I take those, yes, Jose? Okay, so, you're okay with it? Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is the executive directive. Okay, well anyway, um... We got, we got hit with Hurricane Sandy again at the month. We have, we count, um... Downtown Ford Street, we have six complexes, um, the four distant scenes of Ravenna, um, and various stages up until 10 days after the storm. Uh, the power was out, I believe the last senior power turned on was, uh, 10 years ago. I mean, maybe O'Donnell a little earlier. I think Fordman was three days. I think Ravenna was...
Five.
Five, I think, uh... Let me see, downtown, six, yeah, so, I mean, we got everything back on. Um, you know, I, you know, the, the, I guess, two, two things, you know, I mean, the residents did very well, the residents and the people that helped us out, the many, many agents that helped us out, residents were great at all sites, and really, I think, we did really personally. I mean, in, uh, you know, in anything that was, where people were really complaining, you know, uh, in a derogatory manner, uh, you know, there were no injuries, uh, our staff knocked, you know, door to door, make sure people were okay, particularly those, like, used oxygen, you know, those people anyway. Uh, the Red Cross was great, uh, some of them really did hurt them, uh, Senior Elizabeth, you know, helped out, so, you know, everybody pitched in, you know, like, like it was a drill, we got it done. Um, I do understand that the Board of Public Utilities has rated the response by the power company as an F. Um, I didn't think you'd read that article, so, I guess, might just, gonna be some issues coming up.
Yeah, we're gonna need some issues coming up, right?
Bill, the, um, just if I could add the, uh, representatives from JCPenney, is that who's up there? I forget, JCPenney?
PSCNG.
Sorry, I got mixed up from home in here. Uh, will be in attend, in attendance at tomorrow's city council meeting.
PSCNG?
PSCNG, JCPenney, whichever, whoever's up here.
PSCNG, that's right.
Our reps in particular have been asked to attend because it was questioned why it took so long to get the senior buildings back up and running. So, um, I had received a call from our PSCNG rep about, were we, you know, going to the meeting, whatever, and we weren't the ones that were being questioned, it's their performance and their lack of performance. So, um, they are going to have to answer to city council tomorrow night at the council meeting as to what happened, the failure, because what we were getting from the actual workmen that were working on the lines was they could have turned the switch at any time. Especially in Farley was very hard hit, as, well, they all were, Farley, Kennedy, and O'Donnell Dempsey had to wait the longest. Uh, and the workmen could not understand why they, those buildings weren't with power. So, uh, that was expressed loud and clear because we were constantly, Bill and I had called everybody from the Board of Public Utilities to whoever supervisor, to the chief, to the operation executive officer, whoever it was that would listen to us, to complain, to say, hey, listen, we've got seniors, we've got people on oxygen, and this isn't something, you know, we should be categorizing with hospitals and, uh, large institutions because there's a lot of people that were affected. And it just, I know these circumstances were extraordinary, but I think they should have to answer to it tomorrow night, or they should have to answer to it on some level, so, it is gonna happen.
So the workmen said that they could have...
Absolutely, and the key with it is, the workmen were from all over the place, Mississippi, Michigan, Tampa, they were from everywhere, and they weren't authorized, this is what they explained to me, they weren't authorized to go into the area to flip the switch, it had to be someone from PSCNG that went in and flipped, I mean, they're simplifying it for me, but basically, they weren't authorized to go into that room and flip the switch, it had to be somebody from within their own organization. So, that being said, you know, I had to wait till whatever process, whatever protocol, and if you remember, Christie basically said, throw all the plans out, there is no plan book, this is, we gotta go from our gut and do what we need to do, and that didn't happen, they were still probably following protocols that were established for some other reason or for something that wasn't as catastrophic as this event. So, so let them answer to it tomorrow.
Well, like I said, I think this was a learning experience for all of us.
Yeah.
Personally, professionally, um, and I'll be there tomorrow, too.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Um, so, you know, all of those done, I think, I think, uh, you know, in order, because we don't, I mean, the, the climate and the weather patterns, I suppose, are changing, um, depending on what the political party is. So, we're going to take this a little bit more serious, and some people do, we're gonna investigate at a, at least at a minimum, of putting a, some type of generator system in the community. I, I don't think it's that complicated, uh, do we, do we?
There are generators now.
Do we set the money?
The generators are, they operate the elevators, the hallway lighting, and the downstairs, so there is lighting, and there was lighting, and the elevators continue to operate, but what, where the generators didn't have enough juice, or capacity, or fuel, was in, we did have some heat because tenants, we brought down a little electric heater, so there was heat in the lobby areas. But we're exploring larger capacity generators to see what more services we can provide when, in an emergency like that. So, um, the fact that we're able to keep the elevators running was critical, but maybe there's more lighting, maybe there's something else that we can provide to the tenants, uh, or maybe there's just more improved generator systems, because these probably, you know, not that they're old, but I, to be honest with you, I don't know how old they are. But we're looking at, we're, we're gonna do an analysis of the buildings and see what type of generators are gonna work, could work, could benefit, could improve the type of service that we're able to provide in an, in an emergency like that.
They have, uh, they have gas, now yours is, uh, yeah, but yours is, um...
Diesel?
No. Well, you're gonna be here. Yours is gonna be put in. Yours is not part of this investigation, I think, the money was, they had a move in the other day on their side. The money has been identified, so you, you will be just there in there. I, I may look at the ones that are powered by, by, uh, actual gas, you know, the people are probably going that way, you know, his home, they had these new home, uh, home generator systems, you know, I've got a clear idea what the boss, you know, and the father of the cabinet said, we always went to elevators and the hallway lights and the, and the, uh, downstairs, but we had the community room, but, but you can do it, you know, it would really help out a lot in this type of places, so.
Let me just add something, I met someone, um, last week at a professional business networking event, and he works on generators, solar panels, something, and he worked on a major program or business, um, with, uh, Overlook Hospital, and supposedly, based on what he told me, um, his work there at the hospital, they only lost power for a total of a minute during the storm. So, and he says that he's cheaper than everyone else because I know there's, uh, there's, um, procedure and process, there's a process that we have to go by, and a bidding process.
And they probably do too, they probably have to go through procurement of some sort too, I would say.
Mm-hmm, so, um, you know, I'll give you their information, and maybe you guys can just get in contact and see if it's something worth pursuing and looking into.
Definitely.
Alright, um, ten success centers up and running, various activities are going on, uh, there will be, I guess, there's our Toys for Tots distribution will be December 20th, 2012, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., I guess we've identified some step, some toys. Uh, two, two big projects we've got going on, kitchen renovation work at Ravenna Manor, um, has to be done over there, a contractor has to come, a little slow in his works of work, we're gonna have to light a fire under him, we've got a, you know, some, uh, contract handbags, so we gotta figure out what's going on with this guy. I thought that maybe he was all hung up with the storm because there was so much construction activity, but that's really not the story. Uh, speaking of storm, the other housing authorities that failed a lot, of course, I saw the Longblains, I was on the story either, they had some major damage, and that was two of their new building, so, um, we did, we considered, uh, the fact that, uh, the first street building affected a lot, I mean, the marina, you know, was truly washed down.
We saw today's Times, it was a full-blown story about the failures of the New York Castle.
Really?
People, and multi-stores don't get, I don't have how many, how high, but they were, they were up there for, for weeks with no power and no heat.
I know Hope Open evacuated before the storm hit. They sent out like an SOS message that Friday before the weekend of the storm, and were looking for volunteers to help them evacuate one of their buildings, and where everybody went to, I don't know, but they were able to, I mean, it's a much smaller scale, New York is monstrous, so.
You know, they had that, what side, um, held up, and, um, I mean, the river.
I was worried.
And all them, because they, they, they really hit the, I knew, I knew 60 miles an hour winds, you know.
I wasn't worried about the wind, I was worried about the water, the flood, and there was floods down there anyway.
Yeah.
What did it look like out in the back window? I mean, the night was so...
You couldn't see.
You couldn't see because of the wind and the rain?
The lights, you know. The, by the lights being out, you just couldn't see.
Lights were not real?
Yeah, it was pitch black. And one thing, when the roof came off of, um, the, the bodega, you couldn't see it, only thing you heard was the loud noise, boom! And then, only thing you seen was a piece of wood just fly across the, like, this is the car on the corner, it just sailed right across her windshield. If she had been up an inch more, it would've just went right over the car, might've spread off the way it went sailing right across, landed in the street.
Yeah, if you don't wanna do that again, but. And we have lobby upgrade, uh, projects going on in Farley in Florida, that should be, that should start to materialize soon. Anybody have any questions about the report?
There's only one, there's one thing I wanna ask, Bill. Is there any way you can put any heat on the managers downtown so they can start doing things for the kids?
The private property managers?
The managers down there, Conifer, and, because they're, I mean, the kids up here, and that, you know, I know for many years that the children down there was getting things, you know what I'm saying? They wasn't, now that everything's switched over, the kids up here is getting everything and they're not, and I just wondered if there's anything we can do to put some pressure on their managers down there, do something, they don't do anything. You know, I mean, they doing a little raffle, I guess for December or something, but other than that, they don't, there's no activities for the, the kids down there. Down in the fort, down, um...
In the Hope Six sites.
In the Hope Six sites. There's nothing going on for those kids down there anymore.
Well, I mean, you mean after school programs, we still have Miss Ossie's programs, but you mean like the Toys for Tots, that kind of thing?
Yeah, like, there's no Christmas, you know, we used to do the Christmas parties and something for Halloween, you know, something like that for them, and nothing like that is being done for them anymore. Managers aren't doing, you know.
Well, that's a funding issue with them, so, that's a money issue, but we, I'll, we'll talk to them about seeing what they can do. But I'm telling you right now, just knowing what their budgets are, those types of things are the first things that get cut, and as their projects have gotten older, the monies that maybe they used to have to set aside for projects like that are now being used towards making improvements on the property. You know, doing, uh, you know, carpets, or, you know, windows, or that kind of thing, so, that's, their budgets are very, very, very close, and that's probably why those types of things have been cut. But I'll talk to them and see if they can somehow connect with another agency maybe that can provide the service, even if they can't.
Okay.
Plenty of agencies out there that are willing to do stuff down there.
Is there any chance of inviting that section, um, to the Toys and Tots, Toys and Tots of that?
You could, but the problem is, is in getting people, and if we allowed for people from other projects to come up, it just, without like a system of bussing, then I have 50,000 million cars, and it gets to be, it's controlled bedlam, and that's not the way it's been running, it's, it's... The only other thing is if we started doing what we used to do, and then Barbara and I need an extra set of Barbres and Mays, is to go down there and do another, another Toys for Tots down there. In other words, split the toys that we get and go down there, like, we have the 20th, and maybe go down on the 19th and do another thing for the kids that are just in public housing. So we could, maybe not this year, because we're actually doing an event up here with the seniors, I'm having a senior luncheon, because the seniors here get neglected, as opposed to the seniors out in the buildings, they always have things going on, but I never spot my seniors, so here, we decided to throw them a little Christmas luncheon.
Oh, that's good. The seniors where?
Here, in Ravenna, because I do have seniors.
When is that?
The 18th. I might've forgot to tell you. Yeah, over at the community center.
But you do know there's a big Christmas dinner on the 17th?
For?
For seniors and anyone else, and they're going to send the city bus around to pick everyone up.
A lot of our seniors, though, don't go out, so we've got, in fact, Marie got a very poor response, and it's because most of them are shut-ins. So what we're gonna do is whoever will come will have it, and then whatever leftovers we're gonna take around to the people, yeah.
Where is it, does it say?
Old Donald Dempsey.
Oh, no, oh, yeah. Okay, what do we got? Any old business? New business? New business, um, and where's the, we, we already discussed, you know, who do we have?
Well, we have tickets here for the luncheon. Is it a luncheon? The one in the morning, the, this one? You guys have gone before?
Where is that? Oh, here, oh, this one.
I know Nelson wants one, so, you have one. Mm-hmm. I'll go. See if you wanna go? I'm not in this one. Yeah, it's in, yeah. Oh, but you guys can go. You're leaving on that date, yeah, you're leaving before that day, right, you guys are out. It's too good, go. You guys won't be around, I forgot.
I'm jealous.
I'm done, I'm done.
You're gonna go, Elizabeth?
Yes, I'm done. I'm gonna have to spend a minute.
I'll come on, um, I'll scan and I'll send it to you.
Do we need to, uh, new business location of the annual bill, or figure it out, or? Uh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta figure this out a few times, I don't know, um, we were gonna go back to the place at King College, uh, I was thinking, I, I tried to find an alternative, I do, I mean, it's okay, everybody's opinion is, is very important, you know, I got that, I don't wanna seem like, not, I can say everybody would hear, you know, I took, that was disappointing, we do have a room, I did, because I think there was a question about, like, the accessibility here, and I checked that, and I don't think that's a problem, due to the fact that it was an elevator and a drop-off, it's not like you got a parking, a parking lot, there's a front door drop-in, so I don't know, I don't know what you did, I, and I actually went there and I said, there may even be a drop-off in the back, you know, I know, I should've gone down there and really seen, but you can drive up to the front door, you know, get out, you don't park your car, somebody else parked your car, go in and take the elevator downstairs, you can do that, you know, uh, and I would assume that's just as, you know, just as convenient as Benito's. Benito's, as you know, particularly in the, in the winter time, there's not that much parking up here, because I remember one where we went up there in the ice, you know, there was really hands and everything, so, uh, we do have a reservation for the place at King College, but, 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 no, no, you know, you don't have to choose, uh, choose in a manner, but, uh, keep it, uh, but there was a question about the access, and I checked, you know, drove it, and you can get right to the front door, and, uh, right, you know, like, you get in the front door, the elevator is right on the right.
I was just there too, you know, it's a good location, and also, you can be dropped off, or you can go to elevators too, so.
You can. You can.
You can be dropped off.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because I know, um, they do have a parking lot in the front, but whoever's driving, or if you have someone driving, or if you need a ride, let me know, you can be dropped off at the front door.
As you keep parking, parking lot, this is...
It is a little bit.
I got that.
I'm just getting ready to act here, we talking about the same place.
Yeah, we talking, we went last year.
We went last year.
Did you park in the parking lot? Did you park? We just, we just hope that they got a new waitress, if you remember last year?
Yes.
Hope she's Nelson?
Nelson.
Nelson, and... No, with me, no, it wasn't me, it was Nelson and somebody else.
Oh, George.
I tried to get some, uh, I tried to get another accommodation that I really, really liked, but our farmer's not digging it, you know, maybe one day we can build up to it, but they didn't, and this line was thrown, because you're very, actually very nice, but you're gonna have a good view, you know, so, uh...
Or a different lady.
Or a different lady. Oh, you need, I mean, really, you need thirty, we only have fifteen people, you know, and it's close, you know, and it's easy to get into, but, it's the deal, it's a nice, beautiful environment, but, so, alright, so we'll step forward, okay.
I just have one more thing, um, I'm not sure if it should be included in the new business, I saw in one of the resol, two of the resolutions is to approve, um, some materials from PIP to... Oh, okay, uh-huh, it's too big. Would it be too expensive to, for us to have a copy of that as well, as commissioners? Or maybe electronically? I wouldn't mind if it's electronically.
He's, uh, he's a purview of Miss Hall.
Yeah, that, because that's a lot, I don't want your, your, your...
Alright, it's, if any, Marie, if you, if you wanna read it, you know, uh, these is, these are them, they're very well done, um...
Can, can you pick it up? Can you just pick them up?
Yeah, definitely, I just, you know, because the staff and the residents, the staff and the residents are gonna get copies of these, right?
Uh, resident is something, no, no.
No, the resident, these are staff, okay, the staff.
I have definitely been working.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say. Yeah, but those two resolutions, are, are those two big books right there, that I was explaining before?
It'll take me a year probably, but...
I'll bring you a copy. Does anybody else want one?
Alright. One in contact independent audit of all housing authorities, City of Elizabeth program, uh, Hudson, excuse me, Hudson Homes in DM Polo of Limpoff, 22,000, or 21,990, uh, they were the best bidder, uh, they have to do a sort of every year, has to be done on a timely fraction, results have to be sent in the hide, you know, so this is, we found a chance, and they got the best. Um, um, yeah, we had a good score.
One more?
All in favor? Close. One in contact for fee accounting services for all programs administered by the Housing Authority, City of Elizabeth. We have had this for many, many years, um, this organizes our accounting, uh, accounting department, uh, is one of the reasons why we don't have a lot of staff in that, in the division, and, um, we think this is the best firm, not only in New Jersey, but also on the East Coast, you know, we always have, we go very tight on our accounting records, and it's a hunter's actually very one of the current property system, so we're very happy with you.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number eleven, awarded contract for legal services. The housing related matters, um, any questions about this?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, twelve, awarded contract for disorder for the testing inspection of fire alarm panels at all he sites. Uh, this is required to do this on an annual basis. Um, the amount is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. We are currently losing this company, so we're going to force our heads.
Move it.
Let's check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Awarded contract for managing information system consultant services at all he sites. Uh, the manager computer, we've had him for about three years now, he did an excellent job. Uh, the contract is for forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty hours. Um, and this is a winning contract. Move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Uh. fourteen, authorizing the executive director to doubt and execute the revised public housing initiatives and occupancy plan in accordance with U S Department of Housing Urban Renewal guidelines, that's the way you read things. Uh, this has everything that you do procedurally of all of our processes about how somebody gets into public housing and what happens, uh, when you get in there and the grievance procedures and all that stuff.
Question, question, is it, anybody read it yet? And is it, how different is it from the previous? I mean, is it gonna affect, affect a lot, the housing?
Uh, yeah, well, I think, I think in general it's the same, you know, public housing is always evolving. You know, there's always changes, you know, so there's some, there's some changes, you know, if I read it, I read it.
Can I just add something? What happened is that a consultant actually came out. And so Kathy sat with the consultant with, um, Mary Lou's Pinto, who's, we use as original manager. And Anthony Ferretta, who's over section eight. So, actually, each day, they sat and went line by line, and they updated the entire policy.
You can read it next, you can read it first.
Pleasure now, it's yours.
Delicious.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, this is the same, this has to do with the revised section eight voucher program administrative plan. And again, this covers the entire, uh, administration of our section eight program and all of the processes that are involved. Set it. Um, mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Is this a, uh, putting in a contract for executive director, is that a poll session again? There's another discussion on it?
There's gonna be any discussion, which I believe.
Is there any discussion on this, sixteen? I'm assuming, cause if it is recorded, discussion, it is gonna be, you know, they're just going through. They have it approved. The three-year term, I've had him since two thousand. Key point here is is that, um, a man was fired later, he said, no, I'm ruined, and he said, you know, certainly do it. Um, by state law, you can have a, a contract, the text to the executive director, uh, you have to have certain qualifications to get it. Contract can actually be for up to five years. So, you, you, you're going to be forced to do, hard to talk about it, so. Um, you know, uh, it's signed by itself, and the owner will be chairman. At the time of signing, prepared by the council, and there would be probably no differences, the military's just.
One more. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, seventeen amendments. Resolution fifty-seven thirty-four, contract number twelve C dash eleven. Elevator upgrade at Old Donald Dempsey. Uh, bringing down my current elevator tech, this puts in some sound deadening mufflers. Through the power units for the elevators and the sound deadening wall. And the power of him at Old Donald Dempsey should be changed or in number one. Um, this is in the amount of seventy-seven hundred dollars.
One more. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? This is for the scattered site project that we're doing downtown. And this authorizes specifically the, uh, four percent tax credit application we're gonna submit to, uh, the New Jersey Housing Markets Finance Agency. And as well as other applications, um, if necessary for funding, uh, to complete this project.
Well, Bill, one of these projects is on first, I mean, third and bond, right?
First and.
Where the empty lot is?
Uh, I think Andrew Hart is part of that.
Yeah, they're giving out, okay, tied on the back of the.
Yeah, okay.
Because they still have a, um, for sale sign on the front, um.
Uh, this, all of the land is gonna require acquiring on this, so I, I don't know if it's a lot. You did your last deal, I don't know about a month ago.
Which, which property?
It's, it's.
Third and Bond, I, I think for the property, it's, it's been quiet.
Yeah, everything's been quiet. So, we, we, we leave the acquisition.
Okay, cause I just noticed there's a.
Do, do you know who the owner was?
No, but there's a for sale sign up there on the fence. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, just in case somebody's.
Maybe lift our toes up, rip it down, okay.
Alright, I'm moving.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number nineteen, amendments, a contract fifty-four fifty-five, leasing a rooftop space for telephone communication purposes at Ford Leonard. Uh, they're putting up a couple additions to their panel system. Um, it's really not, does it take up any more additional, significantly any more additional place, space? Um, we get a Metro PC is a, is a, you know, is a up and coming baby player in the cell phone market. Um, this is at Ford Leonard. And it adds an additional three hundred dollars a month to get any of these.
One more.
Second. No, I'm checking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty, rescinds resolution fifty-seven forty-seven. Sale of a Dodge pickup to Urban Renewal two oh five First Street, that's a First Street project. What we were gonna do, we were gonna set, we're gonna sell a, um, this big, this, this pickup truck, uh, to the Urban Renewal Company, which is a, a subsidiary of the housing authority, according to court. Um, but you really can't do that, so we're gonna sell it and then, uh, even if people have it, um, fixed up. You know, it's, it's about five thousand dollars worth of work. But actually, once the work is done, the vehicle will be in pretty good shape, and it'll be serviced up nicely as well. Um, so we, we have to make that chance to buy the previous resolution. Um, the eventual point being that it's really the housing authority's responsibility. That's correct, right. To provide a vehicle to, to two oh five First Street, so the same vehicle will be available to two oh five First Street. Get to repairs, and it'll just be done by the housing authority, so, so the resolution comes out, comes out neat.
Okay, so, we still get to you, we still get to you.
But are we still buying the new vehicle?
No, 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 not buying.
Just fixing this one?
Yeah, because just, if you got the vehicle that's active, body's in good shape, the mileage is low. I think it needs a new transfer, something like that. So, if there's a new transfer, we should be good for at least three, four years with it.
Okay.
Second.
Give it to me. Give it to me.
Twenty-one, amended purchase order twenty-one three three one with the Metro Group for boiler water treatment. And six additional buildings, or six buildings at Mad Black Manor. This, the buildings in person, G H I M N N O. Uh, the boiler water was being treated under the initial warranty period. Um, after the warranty ends, it is an authority's responsibility to treat the boilers, and it's very important. Uh, so we're gonna have, what do you got? It's like.
It just falls, falls under the seventeen thousand?
Yeah, it's on the seven.
This is still the important.
Uh, well, you know what it does?
It's a.
On the next day, Bob.
It's a, it's actually amending the original purchase order. What happened, because the, the boilers at, um, Maravallak were, um, under warranty, we didn't have to service them. So, in the original, um, purchase order quote, it didn't include the boilers at Maravallak. And so now it, uh, it needs to be amended to include the boilers at Maravallak, that's done, in the price to service them.
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's it?
Okay.
And you see, also that the meeting being.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody have a very good holiday? And we'll see you as a group on Thursday, January third, here at Forte, Forte. Yeah, we're here now. Who's gonna send you?